Order, at this time Ms. Bowser would you please call for the roll?
Ms. Afanjah?
Here.
Dr. Banks Gray?
Here.
Ms. Cherry?
Here.
Mr. Kilgore?
Here.
Mr. Samuels?
Present.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Here.
Dr. Mason?
Here. Let the record reflect that all board members are here and at this time I will turn the mic over to Tamiya Kelly, our student rep.
Good evening. Tonight we will be led in our Pledge of Allegiance by Camden Savage, a 5th grader from Craft Elementary School. Camden, would you like to come join us?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The mic is not working so she's checking his mic. He should tap.
It's called "It's All in the State of Mind" by Walter D. Wenzel. If you think you are beaten, you are. If you dare not, you won't. If you think you'll lose, you're lost. For out in the world you'll find, success begins with a fellow's will. It's all in the state of mind. For many a game is lost, ere even a play is run. And many a coward fails, ere even his work has begun. Think big and your deeds will grow. Think small and you'll fall behind. Think that you can and you will. It's all in the state of mind. If you think you are outclassed, you are. You've got to think high to rise. You've got to be sure of yourself before you can ever win a prize. Life's battles don't always go to the stronger or faster man, but sooner or later, the man who wins is the fellow who thinks he can, by Walter D. Wenzel.
Thank you so much for that wonderful poem. Now, I understand you go to Craft Elementary School and I went to Craft, so I know you're representing one of the best elementary schools out of here. But what would you say is your favorite part of your school?
Class.
Do you have a specific class?
Science.
And who do you have with you tonight?
My family, my mom, my dad, my sister, my other sister, my brother and my other brother, and my grandma and my grandpa.
Can we get your support system to stand just so we can all give them a round of applause? Can we get your support system to stand so we can all give them a round of applause?
Please stand.
Thank you so much.
Thank you all for joining us tonight and Camden, you also have your principal here with you, assistant principal. Stand up to be recognized also. And thank you all for sharing him with us. We really appreciate you taking the time out to come out to the meeting tonight. Any comments from board members?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Camden, it was absolutely amazing having an opportunity to talk to you before we got started this evening. I wanted to thank your lovely family. You have a great support system and with your school that's backing you, I just wanted to tell you, I know the sky's the limit for you, young man. Thank you so much.
Alright, the chair at this time will entertain a motion to adopt tonight's agenda.
I'm so moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Cherry that we adopt tonight's agenda and seconded by Mr. Samuels. Any discussion? Ms. Bowser would you please call the vote?
Ms. Afanjah?
Aye.
Dr. Banks Gray?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Dr. Mason?
Aye. Motion carries. At this time, we'll turn the mic over to Ms. Goral. I am a little worried about turning it over to her. Ms. Goral seems a little happy about what she has up her sleeve.
I don't know what you're talking about, Chair Mason. Well, thank you Chair Mason, Vice Chair Banks Gray, members of our school board, Superintendent Smith, and members of the Hampton City Schools family. The month of February marks the annual observance of School Board Appreciation Month, a time to salute the work of school board members and celebrate public education. Each year, the Virginia School Boards Association or otherwise, as we call it, VSPA, creates a theme for this annual celebration. This year's theme is Rising to the Challenge, which reflects what our local school board members do on a daily basis as they advocate for public education with local, state, and federal leaders on behalf of all of our students. Local school boards keep the public in charge of public schools since they represent their community's beliefs and values. In Hampton City Schools, our school board members must develop policies and make decisions on complex educational and social issues impacting the entire community. Our HCS school board consistently rises to the challenge as they work together to advance opportunities for every child, every day, whatever it takes. And you know us, Chair Mason, we also like themes, so with the Super Bowl just a little over a week away and our Phoebus Phantoms having back-to-back state championship wins, we decided using a football theme was a great way to show how we rise to the challenge and recognize our school board members for School Board Appreciation Month. So, to kick off our recognition, let's take a look at the screen and meet our HCS team, our super board. And there is music. our One Team, One Dream, our super board. Here they come. Alright, before our cheerleaders start with a chant that they have for you, I'd like you to welcome Cameron Whitney and Trinity Blevins from Bethel High School. We have Amir Stanley and Namia Boyd from Hampton High School, the home of the Cravers. We have Ernest Jones and Alicia Welton from Kickatan High School. And Caleb Tilery and Brianna Furman from Phoebus High School. And I'm going to turn it over to the experts to my left as they're going to give a little chant for you.
Teamwork makes the dream work. And none of our dreams can come true without the hard work of Y-O-U.
Thank you ladies. So at this time, will the board please come around the dais so that our student athletes can present you with a small token of appreciation? So if you would come forward and line up for us. Alright, and if Dr. Mason and Dr. Banks Gray would step forward. Amir, would you go up and present them their token of appreciation? Alright, Mr. Samuels and Dr. Woodhouse, if you would step forward. Ernest is going to bring something up for you. Mr. Kilgore and Ms. Jackson Afanjah, if you would step forward. We've got Cameron. And we're going to let them come back up and take photos in a moment. And then Ms. Cherry, would you step forward? Caleb has something for you. Alright, before I have our student athletes join you up on stage, so the box that you have been presented is for our super board, obviously our One Team, One Dream. On the inside of the box, it states, "As a legendary team, members come from different backgrounds to unite with common purpose, to reach goals, perform their best, and make an exceptional difference each day. We're proud of our dream team, including amazing school board members like you. By combining our individual talents and abilities, great things can happen. Thanks to the efforts of dedicated team members like you, excellence is within everyone's reach." Also, we have bags that the girls are going to bring up in just a moment and inside those gift bags is artwork created by four of our students from Armstrong School for the Arts under the direction of their art teacher, Ms. Debbie Taylor. It goes with our football theme. So on behalf of our staff members, students, families, and the community, please accept these small tokens of appreciation for serving on our super board. We recognize the hard work, the dedication, the commitment, and enthusiasm that you bring to our team. And Dr. Mason, that concludes our recognition. I'm going to let the students come up and take a few photos with you. And as you make your way back to your seats, you can open your boxes if you have something you would like to do.
Every good Super Bowl team has a wonderful general manager, okay? And we can't do the things that we do for our school division without the leadership of our board clerk. She keeps us all together. When I tell you, there's so many moving parts to all of the work that gets done by this board and Ms. Bowser somehow manages to do this with ease and she makes it look so seamless. And so, we want to say thank you very much for all that you do because not only is it Board Appreciation Month, but we also recognize our school board clerks. And that actually is February the 13th through the 17th, but we wanted to make sure we had an opportunity to recognize you on camera because you do a lot of work behind the scenes and so we want to make sure that we recognize you publicly for all that you do. So we want to say thank you for everything and this is a certificate. You want me to read this?
You don't have to.
Okay. I won't read the certificate to you, but here's a little token of appreciation from us and a certificate, alright?
Thank you.
So thank you. Yes, let me take a picture.
I'm going to let somebody open up the bag just to show the artwork that Armstrong created. And then also in the box so that everyone can see your swag. They created a little, it's like a little looking glass bottle with a football in it. Four students from Armstrong School for the Arts. And then Ms. Banks Gray, do you want to open your box and pull out your blue shirt? Not that you have to wear them right now, but we expect to see you in them at some point since you're our dream team. And those were made by the graphics department and print shop.
There you go. And that concludes- Ms. Goral, do you know the name of the student who made these?
I have the four of them. I could send those to you, yes.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Alright, you're welcome.
Alright, so we're going to move along with tonight's agenda.
Mr. Chair, can I just ask something?
Yes, you can.
Does everybody have 23 on the number? How'd you pick 23?
The year.
The year? That's the number of my son-in-law who played in the NFL's number, 23. So that's when I saw Ms. Banks Gray, I was like, I'm wanting number 23 as well. But I do want to thank you. This was just so special in so many ways and just to see the video, the graphic, that was awesome. And Dr. Smith knows better than anybody. Whenever we talk football, I always say, I don't care about the quarterback, it's the kicker that wins the game. So when I saw that I was the kicker, I was a happy something. And they all are. Thank you. I saw that. Yes, I did.
Alright, next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. 3.01 Personnel Report 23-02, 3.02 Minutes of the School Board Meeting of January 11, 2023. 3.03 Certification Closed Session of January 11, 2023. 3.04 Certification of the Closed Session of January 18, 2023. 3.05 Certification of the Closed Session of January 23, 2023. 3.06 Expulsion Number 2022-138. 3.07 Expulsion Number 2022-139. 3.08 Expulsion Number 2022-140. 3.09 Expulsion 2022-141. What's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chair, move approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Second?
Alright, it's been moved by Mr. Kilgore and seconded by Dr. Woodhouse that we approve tonight's consent agenda as presented. Any discussion? Ms. Bowser, would you please call for the vote?
Dr. Banks Gray?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Ms. Afanjah?
Aye.
Dr. Mason?
Aye. Motion carries. Next is item 4 Superintendent and Staff Report, so I will turn this over to our National Award Winning Superintendent, Dr. Jeffrey Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Vice Chair and members of the school board. It is my pleasure to ask Dr. Cagiano to come forward, our Deputy Superintendent for Curriculum Instruction Assessment, who will introduce this particular presentation as it relates to future learning experience, the update that will be provided. And I know that Dr. Kate Maxlow will also participate with members of the team as well.
Thank you, Dr. Smith. Good evening, Chair Mason, Vice Chair Gray, and members of the board. And Dr. Smith, this evening, Dr. Kate Maxlow is joining us. She is our Director of Innovation and Professional Learning and she is, as Dr. Smith mentioned, here with several members of her team to provide the board an update on the Future Learning Experience Program, also known as FLEX. As the board is well aware, this is the pilot year for the FLEX program and for those viewing at home, it is a new and innovative approach to virtual learning. And it's right now, a select group of student participants in grades 1 through 5, both within Hampton's borders and outside of Hampton's borders. So in addition to that, Dr. Maxlow will share some information tonight. I know she's looking forward to share information about a couple of other exciting events that are taking place in March. So at this time, I'll go ahead and turn the presentation over to Dr. Maxlow.
Thank you so very much. And yes, I have a large team with me. It takes a lot of people to make this program work. So here we have Gary Skeen, one of our virtual learning partnerships specialists and also does a lot of the organizational work with the FLEX. Dr. Jennifer Thomason is one of our digital learning specialists and is one of the lead instructional designers for FLEX. Belinda Fluker is also one of our digital learning specialists and the lead K through 2 instructional design specialist. And over there, working the computer, there it is, yes, we have Shannon Pullman, who is also working on instructional design specifically for middle school with us, as well as other various things that she gets to do, like go on field trips. So yes, thank you so much. Good evening and we are excited to provide you with some of our updates. So, our FLEX learning program is 100% virtual online program, like Dr. Cagiano said, currently serving students in K through 5. And it's very unique from other virtual learning programs that you have probably heard of because we actually do a lot of partnership with the parents and a lot of student choice and family choice for their independent activities, which allows families to have a truly integral role in their children's education. And then we also have what we call immersive adventure Fridays, which are my favorite thing in the entire world. I love to do all my classroom observations on Fridays, but it's role plays in which students are using what they are learning Monday through Thursday in math, science, social studies, and English Language Arts to do things like solve puzzles, try to break out of escape rooms, and just a ton of other really fun things. You'll also get to hear a little bit later from our students about how much they love those. In FLEX, our mission and vision are clear. Our mission is really to work as partners with our families to provide quality, flexible learning options for all students. We have several students who may need to go see doctors during the middle of the day who are either themselves have medical issues or a family member who has medical issues. So being able to do this, we have heard from so many parents, has just changed their entire family's life because now they are really able to be a part of their children's education and get all of those needs met that they might not be able to do in person. And so, our vision for that is really creating that personalized learning adventure through the highly engaging online activities and that we use to teach collaboration, creativity, and critical thinking. We think those are super important. We're not just going to be talking heads on a screen because that's really not the point of virtual learning or any learning. And so, we do have, we've been in the news recently, recently on Wavy TV 10, but you can also see here, we were in the Virginia Living Magazine as the choice for virtual learning in Virginia. So lots of people smiling there. Okay, and I already kind of introduced all these folks who are here. Jennifer Lockett could not be here with us tonight. Her daughter had a dance recital, but she is also a key family support specialist with Gary, handling tons of phone calls and technology issues and everything else that keeps FLEX running day to day. And now I am going to turn it over to Mr. Gary Skeen, who is going to introduce our FLEX teachers.
Good evening and thanks for having us. So you do notice that we do have one teacher per grade level, except for in grades 4 and 5, we do have, we had enough enrollments for two classes per grade level. So we have Courtney Spence, Merrill Underfield, Nikki Gados, and Kristen Reebe. Three of those teachers are coming to us from outside of the Division 1, actually lives in Pennsylvania. So we did get a large recruitment effort for this venture. We do have a dedicated counselor, Michelle Wilson, who is on our team as well. And then next, we have Dominique Cross and Mike Lewis are our 4th grade team and Stacy Smithly, Candace Horsey are our 5th grade team. Three of the four of those are also coming to us because they found a lot of interest and excitement in this program. One actually was a forensics pathologist before getting into the teaching profession. So there's lots of experience that really goes into the teaching of this program. And Jessica Thomas is our dedicated special education student, so that we are truly meeting the needs of all the students that are within the program. And so, our enrollment numbers for the first year, you'll see, all class sizes are small, which is what we had planned out in that pilot year. We filled all the slots and then we kind of had a little bit of enrollments, but we were right at, right around our maximum. And you'll notice that we did bring in 44 students from outside of the Division to Hampton City Schools for this program. Okay, and I'm going to turn this over to our design specialist, Ms. Thomas. Dr. Thomason, sorry.
Good evening. So like Dr. Maxlow was saying earlier, Monday through Thursday is really our content-driven day. So that's when our students really experience those four core content areas, ELA, math, science, and social studies. And then on Friday is when they take those content skills and they apply them in a fun and engaging way, whether it be a role play, a puzzle quest, an escape room. And we boast, you know, a 99% attendance rate because of this. Kids really are excited about coming to school every day and especially on those Fridays. So hands-on learning, we do believe even though this is a virtual program, that our students need to have their- So hands-on learning, we do believe, even though this is a virtual program, that our students need to have their hands on manipulatives, science experiments. So what we've done each quarter is we've mailed out interactive notebooks that go along with the curriculum. And our curriculum is in line with the pacing of Hampton City Schools. In the event that students do transfer in or out of the program, they're still right on track. So we mail out these manipulatives, which are based really on the curriculum and the grade level, what's appropriate, and what they need to master that skill. And you'll see in that final picture on the right is science experiments. We do those too at home. So our kids really get that full experience and have a great time really engaging with the lesson. And then field trips. So our FLEX students also attend optional in-person field trips as well as virtual field trips. Some of the field trips that we've already been on are Jamestown, and then on a boat in the James River, as well as swimming. Our second graders got to experience swim lessons with the Learn to Swim program that second graders were a part of through the PE department with Pat Thompson. More field trips are in the works coming up actually this week. And next week, we have Williamsburg, the Mariners Museum. And then we're looking into some future ones, maybe at Bluebird Gap Farm and Fort Monroe, those kinds of places too, when the weather gets a little bit nicer. So in that respect, I do have to give a shout out to the collaboration between our curriculum leads as they kind of let us join in on their field trip process. So shout out to social studies as well as to our health and wellness. And then I will turn it over to Belinda Fluker.
Good evening. So our FLEX students, we really wanted to go ahead and recognize them just as you would in our typical public schools. You would have your good citizen of the month. And so we wanted to recognize them. And so we've had posters made. We've had little signs placed for their yards. And our family specialist, Jennifer Lockett is, she goes out to these families' homes and takes pictures with these kids, and they're so excited. And she comes back and tells us just, you know, the reactions of these families and how appreciative they are. And so this has been really nice to be able to honor these families with these opportunities. So what do students say about FLEX? We have a short video we'd like to play for you all, so you'll have to see for yourselves.
Is there a way to turn the volume up on the computer? It's up on the slides all the way.
Well, a lot of our students are going to say they love our program. Surprise, surprise. One of their favorite parts, again, as mentioned before, is Fridays. That's when we do our immersive adventures. And those are really where we're talking about immersing our students in adventure, putting them in a surreal environment where they are using the skills that they've learned that week to use in a real-world situation, apply their skills to, you know, accomplish a task, complete a mission. For instance, I write K2. And so we've done it where there are aquanauts in there under the sea. And so they go on missions with Captain Kai and they're part of a crewmate, and they have to, you know, rescue a sea creature after getting an aqua alert. And so all of the different grade levels have a different theme. Three through five is more cohesive and flows right into the next. And so we've also got some videos there that we'll be talking about their cumulative projects as well. But they, they're really excited about our program. It makes this really fulfilling for us. Okay. All right, and here's our cumulative project as well. They may play for us, but these are projects. Let's see if it plays. Okay. Well, as you can tell, she's really animated. So our kids really get into this. And so they're taking what they've learned. Each week, they go on immersive adventure, and they're taking that experience from what they've learned from those each week and basically putting it as it, culminating it, uh, venture, putting it all together into one project and reflecting on it, and what they've learned and what really stood out to them, what was fun for them. And it's really nice to see their learning all come together in one little night project. And it's really great, even better, to see how creative they are. As you can see, she now has a mustache, so she is acting out her parts. And so it's really, these kids, they're so innovative. And to be able to see, you know, really what they're able to put together, I think the pandemic has really shown that what we, when we set the bar high for our kids, what they can accomplish. All right, and I'll turn this back over to Mr. Skiing. While there was no sound with those videos, I do encourage you to watch them because they are quite entertaining. And it really does show the spirit of the program and really the kids are getting into. So one of the things that we really value is that parental feedback and that feedback from the family. So we do send out a quarterly survey to all of our family members because we want their feedback on everything from how are the daily lessons going? Do you feel like the lessons are engaging for your students? How do you feel about the, those immersive adventures on Fridays? How is the staff? Is the staff working with you well? How are your teachers? What, you know, what are your thoughts on your teachers? How can we improve? And, you know, even as far as the asynchronous work, you know, the choices that we're giving you to show mastery and content, give us your feedback. We want to know what's going on in the home so that we really have that partnership. So this is our most recent survey. Out of our survey participants, 94% of respondents either strongly agree or agree that their student enjoys their daily lessons, that they're actively engaged in their daily lessons, and they are truly happy with those daily lessons as part of this curriculum. 99% of respondents either strongly agree or agree that the immersive adventures are engaging for their students. This is why we have an attendance rate that is aligned with, you know, a very high attendance rate because students just don't want to miss those immersive adventures on Friday. And 99% of respondents strongly agreed or agreed that teacher interactions with students were engaging, warm, welcoming, and personalized. There truly is, even though they are far apart and there's a screen between them, our teachers have been able to maximize those relationships with each student. And now I will turn this back over to Dr. Kate Maxlow.
All right, so no videos this time, thank goodness. But you can just read some of the comments that parents put on our surveys. I'm not going to read them all to you, just some of the things to pull out. Really hitting the idea of the flexibility, that first kind of pinkish one up there is talking about the medical issues. They love the small groups that their students, we've had other virtual programs where they'll be in a class with 40 other students, and they're just not getting a lot of interaction time. So the fact that they are talking with their teachers and their classmates almost the entire time, parents love. The one about it being a game changer, getting to be a part of their child's education, the hands-on part, the imagination with the immersive adventures, that that is just absolutely, they're just loving seeing what their kids are doing with these things, confident in their learning abilities. And then even for the special education, because our day is a little bit shorter and they're doing a lot of asynchronous, that means that we don't have to pull kids out of their regular class time to go and have special education lessons. So they're getting, they're getting it on top of everything else as well. And so they just loved that. Our plans for next year, we are going to continue with our K through 5 program. We are going to be able to move one teacher hopefully to grade six. We do currently have two fifth grade classes and two fourth grade, one third grade. So we'll be able to take one of our fourth grade or fifth grade teachers hopefully and move them up to that sixth grade. And then we are going to be starting with our curriculum writing for virtual grades six through eight as well. We've already started that a little bit. We have received ESSR grant funding. We've used that to pay, help, help pay for these nine teachers in our pilot, but also to provide some of the instructional supplies, subscription services, et cetera. And then also our, one of our curriculum design specialists, and then having curriculum writers. So there's Shannon over there. We did also get the VideoE Innovation Grant for about 50,000, a little less than $50,000. And that was awarded for the six through eight FLEX curriculum. We're going to use that for a lot of professional development, specifically around the idea of tabletop games and principles and simulations and those kinds of things that are really going to help our teachers make this even more amazing than it already is. Just to, to kind of share, so on these immersive adventures, which we consider our secret sauce, because I don't know anybody else who's using these in education right now, at least not systematically. We did present at VASCD on this. We are in talks with them to potentially do an immersive adventure series in the summer, and then maybe thereafter as well. And so you can just see the picture of me and Belinda and Dr. Jennifer Thomason, who all went there. And then we're the Future of Learning Summit, the thing that I believe you have all received invitations to. We would love to see you there for any or all of it. March 23rd is a day when we're going to have a lot of learning conversations, very similar to your more traditional conference day. And then we're going to have on Friday immersive learning adventures. So we're going to do Curriculum Writing Academy. We're going to have an immersive adventure creation lab, and then also some Academies of Hampton tours. And then the one that I really hope everyone's coming to is our Time Travel Mystery Gala. We have four students from Kickitown High School who are going to, we're filming them this upcoming Tuesday. That is a whodunit mystery that you have to try to figure out. There's also going to be clues and evidence hidden all around the Virginia Air and Space Science Center, as well as the band Good Shot Judy, if you like doing your swing or jazz dancing. So it's going to be just the most amazing night ever, in addition to a silent auction. I cannot tell you how excited I am. Does everyone have their dresses, I'm hoping? Are they Texas? Okay. No, you don't have to wear Texas. Anything, you can wear anything that is appropriate for a gala, past, present, future, or alternate reality. So, yes, okay. And then on Saturday, really excited because we're going to have our student project-based showcase. So the best projects from all four high schools in our academies are going to be competing on Saturday. And we're going to be sharing the impact that they've made on the actual Hampton, the greater Hampton community. So you can find out more about that, yeah. And then just other upcoming important dates, so 20, the FLEX application window is going to be opening as of February 1st. We are going to have some game nights on February 17th and March 10th. First one's going to be an escape room. So if you want to tune in for those, you can see if you can figure out the clues for the escape room and see how the heck are we doing the escape rooms virtually? So we would love to have you. That's free for anyone in the world to join. And March 10th, I believe we are doing a simulation role play for that one, although Gary, tell me what I'm doing for that one. Okay, that's correct, he says. And then, like I said, our Future of Learning Summit, March 23rd through 25th. And at this time, we would like to ask you if you have any questions.
Thank you so much. I'm going to turn it over to board members to see what questions they have. I have a couple of comments, but I will. You sure? You don't want to go first? Mr. Samuels, jump right on in.
I'll jump right in. Thank you. Chairman Mason, Dr. Maxlow, and your team, thank you so much for the presentation. I do have several questions as it relates to two topic, the enrollment. I'll start with enrollment first. You stated that there were 44 students that are outside the district. And can you elaborate some more as to which district they are coming from mostly?
Yeah, so I'm going to let Gary answer that one. I mean, I know generally, but do you want to?
Yes, so we have representation from all seven cities of the Hampton Roads. We have students from as far away as Richmond. We have students that are in Williamsburg. We have a student that's in Culpeper. So mostly within the eastern side of Virginia up to the Richmond area. There is lots of, we've had interest from outside of other parts of Virginia, so it's starting to grow. Outside of the first year, it's starting to grow past that.
Okay, and my follow-up question to that, since they're outside the district and sometimes some district have different rate. And so how are we accepting their rates?
So at this particular point, it's based on the basic aid that we receive. And Ms. Gorel can certainly give us, not Ms. Gorel, Branch. Sorry, Ms. Gorel. The basic, but we're using the basic aid formula.
Okay, thank you. And so
So for each student, we receive their basic aid.
Basic aid, okay. And so my second question as it relates to special ed, I know we have a special ed counselor. And so do you know how many students we are serving with special needs? And if they have a impairment such as sight and hearing, how are we able to offer that service virtually?
So we have 15 students that have, that are currently being serviced with special education services. If there's, if they, everything right now is being serviced within, with virtually. We did have a student that needed to have some testing that was within a division outside of ours. So we arranged that those testing services to be done within that school division, their local school division. So we partner with where they are. If there's a service that they need, that they need to come into a building that needs to be face-to-face, we set that up with our team within, with Hampton City Schools.
Thank you.
We do have one hearing impaired student, or two now? One?
One.
One current one, yes. And so they are able to use like the closed captioning that you can do through Zoom. And their teacher is, you know, texting with mom the whole time. Mom is usually right off camera as well to help. So in many ways, it works out well because of the virtual captioning and the fact that we can record and they can re-watch the videos, et cetera.
Okay, thank you so much.
All right. And the comments from board members? Ms. Lafanja?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Great presentation. Thank you so much for sharing on tonight. Quick question about the counselor. What is her role more specifically? And does she work with all of the students or is it as needed or?
Yeah, so all of the above. I'm going to start the answer, and then I'll have Gary talk about that as well. But so she does a lot with like our Citizen of the Month program. If we have special, you know, days to help build community, she does those. We've been working on getting her into classrooms as well to do the elementary lessons that the counselors do, but then also on an as-needed basis. And I believe she also works with our, like, virtual Virginia students too, yes. So she would be working with them, like helping them choose classes, those kinds of things.
Okay, so more like a, more like an educational or guidance situation more so than if there are some concerns with, or mental health or social, emotional needs?
Yes.
She does address those as well. She would be just like a normal counselor that would be within a building. She's just dedicated to the virtual program. And she does assist with our, with some of our students that are partnering with virtual Virginia outside of the FLEX program. But she does do push-in services and she is involved directly with the FLEX program.
Great, great. Out of curiosity, besides special ed or those who have some particular medical needs, what are some of the other reasons that parents have chosen to enroll their children in this program?
Absolutely. So those are some of the big ones. Sometimes we have students who, it, I don't know if you'd say it's medical, but they just don't always learn as well in the classroom, whether the classroom is too distracting, whether there's high anxiety going on. Whatever the reason is, they thrive in that virtual setting. And then their parents are still getting them out for some, you know, social, emotional, but in a more structured sort of way. We don't have all the kids all the time. And we just also, we have a lot of parents who switched from homeschooling to this just because they didn't want to have to purchase curriculum. They didn't want to have to make up everything on their own. They still get the flexibility. They can still have half a day where they can go do field trips and help their kids choose what to pick. And then we also have some who just, their kids are either super bright and they want to be able to challenge them at higher levels. And then we have some who need a little bit longer on assignments and things, and their parents like to be able to help them with that. So there's, there's a whole bunch of reasons why people choose this for their family.
Very good, very good. Thank you. I guess FLEX, FLEX really speaks to why they choose the program because of so much flexibility. Last question, are these children on the SOL track? Are they taking SOLs?
Yes, yes. And they've been coming in for their growth assessments as well. We also do PALS and any of the other Division-required tests. We do those too.
Excellent. Thank you so much.
Other board members? Dr. Banks Gray?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Amazing presentation to you and your staff. I was, I'm very excited to hear anything about the FLEX program as we were last year. And it's just exciting to see the new manipulatives that you have and the field trips. And I'm just interested in finding out, what are the most popular online field trips that you all offered?
Absolutely. I'm going to turn this one over to Dr. Thomason and Ms. Pullman because they've been really really helping a lot with that, focusing on that particular piece, so. So I know one that really stood out, so I believe our, kind of our upper grades, is there was a Lego one that appeared recently that was virtual. And they signed up and did that one with their students too. And we have a few others lined up. I believe Mariners Museum is one. And then I know there's one coming up too, I believe for our fourth grade. We've actually done a lot more in-person field trips and had really a high turnout for those, which I think surprised us all at first a little bit. But the kids were just so excited to see each other and meet their teacher in person. So they really had an awesome time out on the boat, exploring Jamestown. Swimming was a blast, let me tell you. We got, Belinda and I got to sit and watch that occur as well. And then Shannon joined us on the boat, so. Both, I mean, it's really awesome to experience. But then I know our virtual counselor is also trying to organize Ms. Virginia to come in and speak to K through 5, so that'll be exciting as well.
Thank you. One last question. I'm interested in finding out, what are the methods of locating or determining the manipulatives that you use for each age category or each age level that you have? How do you determine those?
Yes, ma'am. So we, when we, you know, started building the FLEX program, we really reached out to the four core curriculum leads and their departments and really talked with them about manipulatives and what they recommended was best. And then we looked at the Hampton in-person curriculum to see what was being used in person. And so from there, that's kind of how we formulated our list, based on grade level. And so from there, that's kind of how we formulated our list based on grade level and sent out supplies. And the kids have a blast with those too. And we have parents who come in and if they need extra expo markers or their dry erase board, something happened to it. We keep a, a well-stocked closet of some supplies to support our families, headphones especially.
Very good, thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Other board members? Ms. Chair?
Thank you. Great presentation. I just wanted to know, when it comes to getting the word out about this program, I'd just like to hear some of the pieces you have in place to market the program. Because a lot of times, things like this become best kept secrets. Obviously, 44 people know about it. And it's not, I mean, outside of Hampton City Schools and they've enrolled their children. But I did notice on the Wavy TV 10 interview, which I watched the entire thing, I, I thought that was amazing. And I was like, if we could harness that and put that everywhere. So if you could just, just respond to that.
Absolutely. So we do have a widespread social media campaign. Our parents are also amazing. They're in a lot of homeschool groups. And so they just go out on social media and tell each other about this. We have, we are working with Ms. Kelly Goral to contact news outlets, et cetera, for all of this. We're going to be hitting, especially with the gala and the Future of Learning Summit coming up, we're going to be hitting a big push there for, with the press as well. I don't know how many slots we're actually going to have available next year, given the number of students that are moving up and that we're still going to have the nine teachers. So that, that's where we are with that. But yes, we are, we are looking to, to push more.
Great. And I ask that question because I do know that, you know, and Mr. Goral knows better than I do, you know, with the media, which is wonderful, but I have to be actually sitting there at that time to see it.
Yes.
But I do know that we have some very key people like Senator Mamie Locke, who is interested in this program.
Okay.
So maybe we can look at Dr. Smith, some presentations being made too.
I would love that, yes. Abs, anything, we will be happy to go anywhere and talk to anybody that will listen to us.
Well, she's very, very interested in it. I was surprised she even knew about it, but she did. Because she said it was cutting edge education, which you know she's a big proponent of, so thank you.
Awesome, yes, just sign us up. Tell me, tell us where and when to be. We are there.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. I, most of my questions have already been answered, so I just have one. I was thinking about the application process. And I wanted to know, what do you look for in the application?
For students or teachers?
For the students. Is there, is there an application process for the students? And what do you look for when you, you know, receive the application?
And, and I can jump in as well. It's a lottery system that you use, is that correct?
Yeah.
So it's not first come, first served?
No, sir.
No, sir, it's, it's a lottery system.
Yeah, just like the lottery system that we use for our others, many of our other middle schools as well, Eaton and so forth. Yeah. So I, I didn't mean to cut you off, but I.
So explain the lottery. Explain the lottery.
Sure, so we say all applications are due by X date. On X date, we have all of them, you know, it's a Google form. And so they all dump into a Google sheet and we just choose randomized range and then the top kids. We try to make sure that siblings stay together. So there's a little bit, there can sometimes be a little bit of movement with that. So if, you know, we start with kindergarten and if a kindergartner gets in and they have a fourth grade sibling, we're also going to let the fourth grade sibling in. And, but otherwise, it's just kind of the, wherever you are at the top. And we, we do look at how successful they've been in virtual learning in the past. That does not, if they have not been successful, that does not discount them. It just means that we know we need to go into it with a plan with their families to say that, okay, but we need, how are we going to make sure that you're successful in this virtual program? Because this program is very different from other virtual programs. We have a lot more supports. We have the, the super high engagement. So just because you weren't successful in a previous one does not mean that you won't be successful in this one. But we, we just want to make sure that we are giving the family all the support that they would need. But otherwise, we're not looking at grades, we're not looking at test scores, we're not doing any of that. We're taking anyone who wants to be there and learning.
Okay, thank you. Do you see an advantage to this Flex program compared to in-person?
Different kids learn differently. So I would hesitate to say that one style works for all students. What I would say is that the students who are in here, this is working really well for them, for whatever the reasons are. For the students for whom virtual learning tends to work for them or their families, for whatever reason, this is the way to do it, from what we found. Because we have families who have done other virtual learning programs and they tell us the interaction, the communication, the creativity that their kids are getting to do, that just the amount of choice that the kids are getting. This is the way to do virtual learning. We even have people coming from other school divisions to our Future of Learning Summit just to learn how to set up their virtual learning like this. So I know that's kind of a.
Oh, good answer.
It depends answer, but I think, I think there are always going to be some kids who need an option like this.
Right, I, I agree. Some kids learn hands-on, some visual and, you know, so.
We're still pretty hands-on. We have, they have a lot of those manipulatives right there. We've, we've found ways.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This is very innovative. When I, when I tell you just looking at where we are.
We're talking and I'm like. Go, go, go ahead, Doc. I just have a follow up question.
We love, this is our favorite thing to talk about.
But just the innovation in and of itself. You know, when you talk about trying to meet every child every day, whatever it takes, this speaks volumes to, to that as, as a mission statement for the division. Because when you talk about the differential learning that's actually occurring with this whole program, that, that, that takes us into a whole nother realm of education. And listening to, you know, your response to Dr. Woodhouse in regards to just looking at how children learn and some of the other challenges that may or may exist. I know we had some great feedback with the surveys and some very positive responses. But I, you know, of course, we had some minimal numbers as well that this didn't work. You know, this may be a situation, well, what else can we do in terms of improving the program? But also what other offerings do we have within Hampton City Schools that we can, you know, move forward with some of, some of those families in that, in that area? So this is, this is awesome. So I say thank you very much for all of the hard work that, that you all are doing every day for, for the Flex program. And so I'll go back to Ms. Fong.
I'm not going to keep asking questions, but I did think of another, I did think of another question as you were talking. Because I just, I'm very excited about it, so I, I'm, I'm very excited. And the testimonials were great and I love testimonials and the videos were great and the written testimonials were, were great. But what about the achievement outcomes? Can you tell us a little bit about that? I know we're just into the first quarter. And I know people love things sometime, but that doesn't mean they're always doing well. You know, just because they enjoy it. So it, how are they doing? What are the grades like?
The grades are actually really good. As of, I believe, as of this quarter, we, as of this last quarter, we only had 17 Ds and Fs. And that is out of all the grades, all subjects. So, and that is a huge labor as well because the, we found that the kids show up very well for the synchronous lessons. They love those. The asynchronous work is where we sometimes struggle. So we've implemented, like you were talking about, we, we've done a lot of things. We've learned a lot this, just in half a year. And so we are doing homework clubs and we are doing like extra bonus tracks for our students to come in. They even will come in our IPL help desk that we have for teachers and parents, but they will come on and ask how to do their homework, et cetera. So we, we have all of those things going. We have also started having some, some remediation classes, but we don't call them remediation classes. Instead, they're, something like secret spies, something, I don't know. She's doing escape rooms with them, but all around literature. And so they're doing like an actual bookstore. So they, so it's like the kind of thing where it's not like, oh, you have to come. It's like, oh, no, you get to come. I will say, one of the things that we've learned is that our kids do, do need a little bit more test practice. That I think, you know, we've had some of the most amazing projects you will ever see and we're super happy because that is, that is crucial to all kids, that they are learning how to do those things. But we do know now that we need to correct a little bit and we don't want to go totally one, you know, a 180 to test prep, but we do need to do a little bit of that. We're going to gamify it. We're going to make it really fun. We're going to make it the kind of thing where the kids want to do it because then they can earn extra points for their immersive adventures and, and things like that. So like, like with, we are on track to do well, especially given how much our students have already grown when you compare where they were like first quarter and when they first came to us, where they are now.
Very good, very good. So I just, I'll just love that. I love one about the innovation in the learning, but that the achievement outcomes are significant. So I just anticipate we'll have to create capacity with your program because I'm sure it'll be, you know, largely sought after in years to come. And capacity is what I'm thinking about right now. You know, how do we create capacity? How do we increase capacity for the program so that we can take more students? And students can, you know, have this option.
One of the things that we've been looking into along those lines is how could we potentially set it up to charge tuition for those outside of Virginia? Who are interested in this option? There's hoops to jump through for that, but that is something that we've been exploring.
I think that's worth exploring. Thank you.
Definitely worth exploring.
Right on it.
Don't forget me now.
Mr. Samuel?
So since I'm looking at Dr. Cagiano with our academies and so forth, and we have other school division visiting our academies. And since this is the inaugural, inaugural rolling out of the Flex program, do you know or have you been contacted by other school divisions to look at this Flex system?
Yes, several, as a matter of fact. We have, we have several coming from outside school divisions just to our Future of Learning Summit. I actually had someone who saw the Wavy TV 10 interview and another school division reach out to me and say, hey, can we just talk to you guys? We just want to know what you're doing and how you're doing. And ended up signing up eight people to come. So we were like, woo-hoo, that's awesome. And I know that we, we've even had people from neighboring school divisions come on to some of our parent and teacher things that, like introduction sessions that we were doing last year and asking us all kinds of questions about how we were doing things. They're starting their own rival virtual learning program. So we, and we, we've had multiple people reach out to us from other school divisions. Like, what is this immersive adventure thing? What are you guys doing? So, yes.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Tamiya?
So in regards to the capacity of the classes, is there a waiting list system for those who don't get in on the first try? And does the waiting list carry over for the next year? Or do families have to reapply?
We've asked families to reapply just because we don't know if they're still interested each year. So as, you know, because we do, we've had some students for whom this was not the right program, right? And we understand that because it, the nice thing about it, having a lot of family choice and being able to work with your students is that it does, it gives that choice, but it also takes a lot of parental involvement. And sometimes people have had life circumstances and they're like, I, we, we can't do this anymore. I have to send my child back to in-person. And we completely understand that, no hard feelings. And so for those reasons, you know, we go to the waitlist and we say, oh, we have a spot. Do you want to, do you want to join? And frequently they will, but we are going to ask them to reapply for the next school year just to make sure that they still want to do it and we're not keeping people out that, you know. So, yes.
I, I think it's wonderful. Like I said, when we think about the learning loss that we're trying to recover from the pandemic alone and some of the challenges that I know people are having with being in-person, I think this is, this is an awesome step. One, one last thing, just in terms of technology with requirement, technology requirements and all for participants, what would a family need to have access to in order to participate in this program? And if they fall short, are we able to provide those resources to them?
Yeah, so as long as they're within the, you know, Hampton City Schools geographic boundaries, we obviously provide Chromebooks to them. We also can help them get internet. Those are the only things they actually need technology wise. Those who are outside, we have said you need to provide your own device. You need to have your own high-speed internet access. We've had a few who have, you know, very, they, for whatever reasons, we've been helpful to them and, you know, helped provide a device when something just really wasn't working. We have agreements that we sign and everything. And we don't, we don't make that the rule, but there, there have been a few cases and they're always nearby.
Okay, all right. Any other questions? Okay, all right. Run, run, no, I'm just kidding.
Guess I'm sticking around.
That's it, thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Yes, we're happy to talk about it anytime, seriously.
Thank you.
I think the final report for the superintendent and staff will be business operations. And of course, Ms. Branch in terms of the financial report. And then we'll ask her to remain for your deliberations as well.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, Chair Mason, Vice Chair Banks Gray, school board members, Dr. Smith, and the Hampton community. Tonight is my pleasure to present the monthly operating report for December 2022. At the end of December, our revenues totaled $110 million. This was approximately 14% higher when compared to the prior fiscal year. The difference continues to be increased state funding and state sales tax, also the timing of our local governing body payment, which always varies based on monthly cash flow needs during the school year. Our cumulative expenditures and encumbrances totaled $135.8 million. This was about 9% higher when compared to the prior fiscal year. That difference is due to increased compensation costs, all of which are in line with the approved fiscal year 2023 school board budget. And then also the payout of the state-approved one-time federal pandemic relief bonus from back in December. Our average daily membership projection, based on the reforecast from the Virginia Department of Education, is estimated to be 41 increase. That would be moving it from $18,870 to $18,911. Previously, last month, I was providing an estimate of what that impact could be for the school division. And that was about $610,000. But based on more recent news from the Virginia Department of Education concerning the miscalculation in direct aid template, that estimate has, of course, now changed. We are estimating just a slight gain. So really looking at breaking even. However, I would caution us not to make any decisions because state funding is essentially based on that final March ADM or average daily membership number. But that just gives us a ballpark figure as we get closer to that date. And then as always, included in the report, our transfers to and from the technology classification for December 2022. That completes tonight's report.
Thank you so much, Ms. Branch. And as a part of the report, can you just briefly kind of give an overview of what the impact on Hampton City Schools with the state's recent announcement of the shortfall, or miscalculations, I think is what they call it? But can you briefly share an impact for, for our listeners and viewing audience in terms of how are we impacted by that and what does that mean for Hampton City Schools?
So I'll start with fiscal year 2023, the current school year. So based on the calculation error, what that means is our basic aid was overstated by about a little over $1 million. So essentially, we would be expecting $1 million less in state funding. However, basic aid is just one line item of state funding and we are projected to see some increases in other areas such as state sales tax for the current school year. So that will help to offset the impact to Hampton City Schools as it relates to that error specifically. When we're looking at fiscal year 2024's forecast, and I presented that last Janu, well, this past month, January, February's come pretty fast. I presented to the school board and to the community that we were originally projecting an increase in state funding of $3 million. However, due to this error in the calculation tool, that estimate has now decreased by 2.8 million. And now we're projecting around additional, I believe it was a little over $600,000 just in the state funds line item, not incorporating state sales tax. So what that means for the school division, I mean, we're currently developing our budget for next school year. I know that there are school divisions who have already gone through their process. So to say, the good thing for us is that just means we have to reprioritize our conversations around the budget before we propose, make the proposal in March of this school year.
Thank you. Any comments or questions from board members? All right.
Thank you. And we had some healthy discussions today with the superintendent as we plan for the upcoming budget. So thank you, Ms. Branch. We'll turn it back over to you. Yes, sir, Ms. Chair.
All right, well, Ms. Branch, we're going to move right into item number five, which is deliberation. And I will turn the chair, turn it back over to you to discuss item 5.01.
Good evening again. So the resolution that is on the deliberation agenda tonight, this is a request to submit 10 separate applications for funds from the state literary loan program. These applications would be for individual projects at the following schools. Um, these applications would be for individual projects at the following schools. Aberdeen, Asbury, Barron, Forest, Craft, Langley, Maryas Peak, Albert W. Patrick, Phillips and Smith. And this will be for renovation projects for items to include renovating classrooms, uh, renovating school entryways, replacement of doors, windows and other items, for example. So within the current state budget, um, the Virginia Department of Education, they are authorized to issue up to $200 million of funds from the literary fund program. And as part of this authorization, they are prioritizing school divisions who have a LCI between 0 to .29, which Hampton City Schools, our current LCI or local composite index is .2731. So what that could mean for us is that we're able to borrow with the city of Hampton funds at a 2% interest rate. So I mentioned the city of Hampton because that's a very important fact because we are fiscally dependent upon the city. So we alone can't go enter into a loan or enter into any debt. But we have to work collaboratively with the city of Hampton. And we've started those conversations on how can we leverage these dollars to fund a portion of our capital, um, improvement plan. So based on that collaboration, um, the city council, they have approved the resolution on January 25th and actually received the signed resolution today where they are agreeing to authorize, um, us to apply for the literary loan for these 10 projects. And if it be the board's pleasure, the resolution tonight, I would ask, um, if you all would consider moving it to the action agenda. Um, and if approved, it will allow us to make sure that we meet the deadline of February 10 to submit all of the required documentation.
And this rate is, is lower than what the bond rate would be if we, you know, went with the, the normal process, correct?
Yes, I'm talking with the city, they said the average is around 5%.
Okay, just want to make sure everybody understands it.
Yeah, I was, I was going to make sure that she, that Ms. Branch elaborated. That sort of community knew that at this, this is, this is in the best interest of the school division based on the regular.
Right. Mm-hmm. Yes. Any other comments? Okay, all right. The chair will entertain a motion.
Yes, Mr. Chair, uh, in order to support the deadline, I move that we move deliberation item 5.01 to action item 5, 6.01 for approval this evening.
Second.
All right, it's been moved by Mr. Kilgore and seconded by Ms. Afonja that we move deliberation item 5.01 to items for action and that will become item 6.01. Any questions and discussion from the board? Ms. Bowers, would you please call for the vote?
Ms. Cherry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Ms. Afonja?
Aye.
Dr. Banks Gray?
Aye.
Dr. Mason?
Aye, motion carries. Thank you very much. All right, next item on the agenda is item number seven, hearing of any delegations or presentation of any written communications or petitions.
We need to vote.
And so far, I.
Point of order, Mr. Chair.
Oh, I'm sorry.
6.01.
That's right. I'm sorry, moving to item six, I'm sorry. We agreed to move it to action, but we have not taken any action on it.
Now you need to vote.
All right, exactly. All right, so the chair will entertain a motion for action item, uh, 6.01.
Mr. Chair, move approval of action item 6.01.
Second.
All right, it's been moved by Mr. Kilgore and seconded by Dr. Woodhouse that we approve item 6.01. Any discussion? All right, Ms. Bowers, please call for the vote.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Ms. Afonja?
Aye.
Dr. Banks Gray?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye.
Dr. Mason?
Aye, motion carries. All right, now we're moving on to action, to item number seven. Hearing of any delegations or presentation of any written communications or petitions. And I have one that we have received so far, uh, Ms. Bowers. Is that it?
Let me see if I can get through this.
All right, if you will, will you read?
Citizens are invited to address the school board on matters of public concern about the school division. Speaker forums are available prior to the start of the meeting. If you wish to address the school board, please complete the form and give it to the clerk by 6:45 PM on the day of the meeting. Each individual will have three minutes to speak. At the end of your time, you will hear a buzzer. All comments shall be directed to the school board. Speakers may not yield their time to another. Speakers should address the school board with decorum on policy issues. Comments shall relate to agenda items or matters germane to the business or duties of the school board. Speakers comment on individuals at their own risk of violating confidentiality laws and are defaming the subjects of their comments. Neither the school board, the superintendent nor the school administration will respond publicly to any comments by speakers about individuals. Presentation of resolutions, declarations, proclamations, manifestos, awards or other similar, similar documents not originated under the auspices of the school board or administration is prohibited during the public comment period. The audience is asked to be respectful of all speakers. Public comment is the school board's opportunity to listen to the speaker. Since our purpose is to hear from you, the board will not engage in dialogue with the audience or whomever is at the podium. Matters requiring a response will be directed to the superintendent for research and response. The superintendent may report back on such matters at a subsequent business meeting session as appropriate. The school board carefully considers your comments as we decide matters that are brought before us. We appreciate your attendance and your input.
All right, thank you very much. And the one speaker that we have tonight is Brenda Marks.
Good evening, school board members and Dr. Smith. First, I'd like to take this opportunity to wish Dr. Smith the best in all of his future endeavors. But again, I'm coming with a few problems. Y'all have the capabilities to fix them all, just take the initiative. First, as a special education parent, I'm dismayed that we have no CAC. Now, I realize that the members of CAC, a lot of them had personal problems and had to give up their positions, but it has now been several months and there has been no movement towards establishing a new CAC committee. That's the big general one. The second thing, this is my daughter's last year at Hunter B. Andrews and I feel I would be remiss if I did not pass on the observations of how much the school has changed. We have no active PTA this year. We had one. We had a girl that was really going to be gung ho. And early January, I messaged her and asked her what were we doing? And I'm not going to name her, but if anybody would like to see the conversation. I said, I was just wondering what's up with Andrews. Are we not doing anything there right now? Unfortunately, we are not currently. Is there a reason? I was looking forward to an active year with you in charge. We too were looking forward as well. However, the school was not. And therefore, we were unable to do what was planned. And then the conversation goes on a little bit and it says, again, it was out of the board's control after repeatedly pressing forward with pushback and lack of effort thereof, to say the least. Um, for the first time in 10 years, we had no award ceremony for our children the first nine weeks. No principal award, no A.B. honor roll, no perfect attendance, no award. You'd have children that for nine and a half years knew that if they did their best, every nine weeks, there was an award ceremony. When I questioned why it didn't happen, I was told, we got busy. So the conversation went a step forward and it says, Ms. Marks, do you want a certificate? Is that what it is? And I said, no, I want the children to get the recognition that they deserve.
Thank you, Ms. Marks. All right. Item eight on the agenda, information, 8.01, next meetings. A work session will be held to discuss the superintendent's search with, uh, Dr. Smith retiring. Um, retirement date being July 1. We will have a meeting tomorrow at Rupert Sargent Building, um, to discuss, uh, next steps in the superintendent's search. And then another work session is scheduled for February the 15th at the Rupert Sargent Building. And our next regular meeting will be held on March the 1st, right back here at Jones. 8.02, items for information.
You have two interview dates, six, seven?
Yeah, those are closed sessions.
I understand, but it's still, the public should know.
Okay, we do have, uh, closed sessions, uh, set up for February the 6th and 7th to, uh, continue with our school board attorney interviews, uh, follow-up interviews for the positions, um, as well. And so that, that's the, am I missing any other meetings? Nope, that's it.
I think that's it.
All right. Um, and so next is 8.02, items for information. Uh, Mr. Superintendent?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. And just, um, we, we will certainly follow up as appropriate, um, uh, on the matters brought before the board for public comment, um, this evening. We'll ask Dr. Kajiano to follow up, um, with Ms. Marks prior to departing this evening as well. Okay? But, but also to our super board, um, thank you for your outstanding leadership. And certainly, um, I think, um, Ms. Goral and members of the team captured, um, the essence of the work of the school board and, and we look forward to you wearing, uh, your individual, uh, football jersey there and getting a photo so that we can share that with the broader community as well. So thank you for your exceptional leadership. We, we greatly appreciate it and our young people benefit from your leadership. Thank you.
Any other information to be brought forth by board members? Mr. Samuels?
And thank you so much. I just have one information to share and I know it was, uh, shared via the school website, but since my son attend, um, Hunter B. Andrews, I'd like to, uh, shout out Dr. Monroe, his assistant principal at Hunter B. Andrews. His, he earned his doctoral degree, um, this month. And so the Gator family is so proud of him.
Awesome, congratulations, Dr. Monroe. All right. Anyone else? Student rep, Tamiya? All right, well, with no other business to be brought before this board, I declare this speech adjourned.
You, you should have told me something, you should have told me.